Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call the City of Taft Planning Commission, regularly scheduled meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, April sixth, two thousand twenty-two. We are meeting at the City Hall Council Chambers in Taft, California, at two oh nine East Kern Street. Our zip code is nine three two six eight. The City of Taft Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are being livestreamed at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot YouTube dot com forward slash user forward slash City of Taft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following five instructions. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk at Y Mayfield at CityofTaft.org, made by phone to the city clerk's office at six six one seven six three one two two two. Or public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the time of the meeting. Any comments received will be read into the record. At this time, I'd like you to rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Livingston, would you lead us, please?
Pledge, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Stephen McDaniel.
Lord, we thank you today for your blessings upon our city. We just pray that you would continue to to anoint and give us prosperity and health. We pray over this meeting tonight that you would lead this commission as they make decisions for our city, lead and guide and direct our thoughts and our decisions in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Stephen. Hey, at this time, it's a time for the roll call.
Chairman Orrin.
Here.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Here.
Commissioner Dowden.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lykem.
Here.
Item number one on the agenda is citizens' requests and public comments. This is the time and place for the council, excuse me, for the general public to address the commission on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the commission from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The commission may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Have we anyone?
No.
There is no one wishing to speak at this time, which moves us to item two, which is the minutes from our regular March second, two thousand twenty-two meeting. The recommendation that the minutes be approved as they have been submitted. Motion to approve as submitted.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lykem.
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Chairman Orrin.
Yes. That carries on a five zero, the approval of minutes. Item number three is a presentation from the Taft Community Gardens Board Presidents. That's plural, Jennifer, Brian, and Ryan Wade. Are you co's?
No. I'm the board member.
Okay, we got the heavyweights here anyhow. Okay, it's time for you to make a presentation. Thank you.
Hello, Planning Commission. My name is Jennifer Brian, and this is.
I'm Ryan Wade.
And I am the board president for the Taft Community Gardens, which began, I began being president in January, but we both are fairly new to the board. But we are here to kind of give you an overview of the Taft Community Gardens and what we're planning on doing this year. So about the Taft Community Gardens, it opened in two thousand nine with about one point five acres leased from the Water District on Ninth Street, across from True Value. Today, we have fifty-two beds and numerous shade and fruit trees available for the community. They can come in and rent a bed. Cost is fifty dollars. They can come in and grow whatever they'd like. Our purpose, though, is to teach the community how to grow fresh nutritious foods using effective growing techniques, proper nutrition, and water conservation. Recently, last year in two thousand twenty-one, we rented out forty beds to our community and donated ten to local organizations or individuals in need. So some examples include the cooking class at Taft High, the ARC, the Taft College TILL students, and many other different organizations or individuals who wanted to get outside and plant something. We hosted several events, including a spring festival and monthly cleanup and coffee events. The spring festival was held with people and it went really well. We had some vendors out there, but basically the purpose was to get people out there to see the gardens after COVID and no events for a long while. We also installed the monthly cleanup and coffee events as a way to kind of create relationships with the gardeners who were renting beds from us. We knew that there weren't really any opportunities for people who were renting beds with us to get together and talk and discuss and get advice from one another. So we started doing those mid-year, and recently they've gotten very big. We have a lot of students from Taft High who come out and do their community service, as well as the TILL students and other people in the community who've come out and just help us clean. And then also, we've done some gardening education, square foot gardening, things like that. We've also utilized social media to increase outreach, so we've already had a Facebook. So we went ahead and ramped that up with Instagram to reach more of a younger audience, which has been working. We definitely have more of the younger audience attending too. We brought on new board members and reinvigorated goals for two thousand twenty-two as well. This year, we continue to consistently hold monthly cleanup and coffee events, so we do those the first Saturday of every month. And we really try not to cancel them. We did cancel in March for weather reasons, but for the most part, we try to keep those consistent so that people can plan on attending. We also want to collaborate with more local organizations, so we really want to get back out there. We want the community gardens front and center. I've talked to a lot of people in the last year, and while the community garden's been around for a long time, I think there's a lot of people who still don't know what we do and what we offer. So we want to get back out there and we want to kind of educate the community on what it is that we have to do. We want to hold more gardening education demonstrations, so composting is big now with the new laws that have been in effect regarding the different streams of recycling and things like that. So holding composting classes, we've held a couple this year already. And then we also are implementing gardener dinners, which we actually have one this coming Saturday, where we create an intimate and enlightening night of cooking and community. These right now are just simply just our gardeners. We have, we don't charge anybody to come out. It's more just, hey, bring a dish, let's hang out under the lights at the garden and and do that. But eventually, we want to make these bigger events so that we can invite more people to experience the joys of cooking together and things like that. We also want to grow more food and share that with the community and do whatever we can to be good community partners. I think this is Ryan, right?
Okay, so when it comes to gardening, I am not an avid gardener. I like the idea of gardening. From finding out, I tried to plant watermelons last year. I got one watermelon, tried to plant some pumpkins. Pumpkins do not do well in beds in that aspect of it. But like you were saying, we are heavily community is why we want to get back into this with the community gardens. We feel that there's a big need, especially coming back from COVID, and the garden offers that area for us. So essentially, for fifty dollars a year, you get a twelve-foot by four-foot garden bed. It has automatic water feeding to it, so if you want to plant anything and you just want to plant it and forget it, as long as it's not something that's super delicate, it will grow. And the vines are adjustable, so you can move them towards you like a bat in that sense. And then we also have access to the sheds, so anything that you need to garden with, it's already available to you. You just show up and it's ready to rock and roll. And it's available. I rented up, I did mine through the REC website, which was, I mean, I used, I have, I have four boys. They all play sports and that's what I use it already, and it was super simple. And I made, and it was done within a matter of minutes and it's perfect. So I know we have something like ten, twelve, fifteen spots available still, but.
I think it's actually more like seven or eight.
Oh, seven or eight. So seven or eight available, they're almost gone, but they are definitely, I mean, if you want to grow something, do it. I bought flowers for my wife. It's expensive. And I really, really considered and still consider even planting some flowers on my own just so I can get away from having to pay some, an arm and a leg for some flowers that I could grow myself. But no, I take my boys down there and we do these coffees and cleanups and it's really good. We have a lot, we have some TILL students coming. We have one TILL student that comes out regularly that just loves it. And we've been a lot, we've offering now community hour services. So a lot of these other clubs throughout the high school are starting to come and show up and collect coffee and cleanups to get up or cleanups and coffee to get a community hour services, hours. And so it's really been a win for us because the gardens never looked better. And it's real, and it's safe, and it's honestly, it's free labor. I mean, it really is. It may, I mean, I'm not, it's great for, it's great for us. Gets community out there and lets everybody know that this is a space there you can actually enjoy gardening. And it's secure too, so you don't have to worry about anybody coming through and destroying any plants. And we do have it, it is underneath, we do have a camera that records over everything. So everything done within a, it's a one week period. So if it's eight days, sorry, but if it's when that window, then we can probably figure out what happened in that sense as well. And sponsorship. So we have four levels of sponsorship. Bronze is as simple as you can.
It's really small, but basically it says, those are just like for anything, like you want to donate, like raffle tickets or.
So any arts and crafts, anything that you design or anything that you would like to do, we are going to start having like our spring festival. If you want to donate something during the arts and crafts time, definitely that's available. We'll take those. Just ask us. Then we have our silver level, which is fifty to a hundred dollars. Provides you with a charitable donation, social media recognition. Thank you for your support. Gold level is a hundred to four, uh, one hundred to five hundred, same social media recognition, tax ID letter, and your logo is added to the Taft Community Garden sponsorship wall. And the platinum level is five hundred dollars, provided the same tax ID, social media with a banner, and your logo is installed at the garden. So with the gold and the platinum levels, we're in the process of revamping our signage and the way we do our sponsorships. We're in the process of working with a local wood builder, and he's going to start building us flowers, different sizes, that each level will be able to associate a flower, and either we'll have an engraving with their name on it, and we're going to develop a community box, we call it a community garden, and we'll have slots that you can actually put the people, the sponsorships, their flower, vice versa, whatever. We put them in those slots, they're interchangeable throughout the whole, throughout years. So it's sponsorship's good for one year. Once a year expires, we'll reach out to you, go, hey, are you interested in re-sponsoring? Yay or nay? And then if you are, cool. If not, then we'll pull your flower out, we'll put someone else's flower in. I mean, and that's just how it works. And so, but that is, I mean.
And I think something really important to note that is, we're not asking for ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars. It doesn't take a whole lot to run the community garden. So we're really looking for just small ways that people can get involved, small ways that people can donate money and just help us run and have these educational events that'll benefit students or community members in need. So that's something that whenever we did the planning for the sponsorship opportunities, that's something that we had in mind.
And those are our three most current sponsors right now is Westside Waste Management, Westside Recreation Park District, which has been amazing, and Synagro, which has been amazing. So yeah, we have plenty of space for other sponsorships. Honestly, we're, uh, I don't know, we're looking for a lot more, we're looking for sponsorship. We don't want to be so dependent on, so only a couple of entities. We like to be dependent on more of a community-based community garden. There is just not three companies that support us where we have the community supporting us as well.
And that being said, we are very thankful for Synagro, who has been a huge sponsor for us for over the last ten years.
And Westside Waste, especially with this new, we inherited, well, Jennifer inherited the new waste problem right out the gate. We're like, what are we going to do? And everyone's like, what do we do? And so they've been really accommodating with us in that sense, so we couldn't be more thankful for them as well.
Yeah.
Questions?
Um, yeah, so.
Or join us.
But we're always looking for volunteers. We do have a couple open board member slots as well. But at the end of the day, the community garden has been there forever. Kathleen would know. She's an original board member. But we are hoping to kind of just shine a little bit more light on this important community resource that a lot of people may not know about and, you know, getting out there and, you know, showing our faces everywhere and making sure that people know that this is there.
Yeah, it's definitely a resource that I feel a lot of people don't understand and don't realize. And I mean, we think that there's really something special about the gardens and some of the things that we've talked about, some of our board meetings moving forward is, there's definitely some big op, I mean, there's some big things I feel like that are coming that are going to be really help, I mean, the community and really get some space that, you know, we could do some things.
Yeah, but that's it. If anyone has any questions, yes?
I, I know that with the new fence and the gates and the locking combinations, is that, that has solved the problem with, that we had for a couple of years with theft.
We've had, yeah, we've had some minor, minor things, but a lot of that has to do with like confusion between gardeners, thinking like, oh, I thought that was my bed, that kind of thing. But we haven't had any huge vandalism. We've had, like, a lot of what we encounter is more like confusion. So just making sure that between board members and our partners, which is the REC, they do a lot of our emergency phone calls for us, so people will call the REC and then they will get in contact with us. So making sure that communication is both two-way and that we're constantly keeping each other updated when things happen.
Well, I think one thing that's really important, especially with the price of food increasing astronomically, is fifty dollars a year is a very small amount for the food that you get out of the garden and also the fruit trees. All of the fruit trees are, can be gleaned by the community garden members, so it's money-saving.
I went to the tangerines. I had a tangerine a month ago and those things were phenomenal, like, hands down.
Yeah, and the kids love it. My grandkids love to go there. You have the treasure garden still in operation, so they can go through and they can pick up little pieces of treasure that's distributed through there.
Absolutely. And a lot of what our work recently has been is getting organized, making sure that the trees are being fertilized and that those stick around for a long time. We also implemented, we're growing our own herb garden that people can come in and grab fresh herbs when they need them for dinner. So just really making it easier for people to cook nutritious food or even just cook in general with the things that they can find right there in the community garden.
Yeah, and the, like we were talking about, the herb garden, that's just not, that's for anybody to, it's not, it's just not ours. It's, as in the board members, it's available to anybody inside the community. So if you need something and you don't have it, just run down there and take a pair of scissors and you're good to go.
Exactly.
I'm hoping you guys do the pumpkin patch again this year. That was, it all seems like a pretty good success.
Yes.
We did that with, I don't know.
So the pumpkin patch was done in two thousand and twenty, I believe, before both of us were even part of the garden. And I think that was in response to the oil museum not doing their annual pumpkin patch. So I'm not sure if they're doing theirs, but we are happy to take that on again if they decide not to. And I, I did actually have a conversation with the oil museum today, and I think there is some potential for future events there and at the garden, including fall events and Christmas events and things like that, and just creating more community engagement within the different organizations.
Not so much competing, more of inner, more of helping each other as in like, oh, we got an event today, so do we. And it's like, it splits everybody. We want to try to be copacetic with everybody as we go move forward with this. And that's what we're hoping to acquire with the other organizations inside the community.
That's, that's important. In Taft, we get a couple of events going on, and we're not a big town, so it really does take away from the other.
Absolutely.
Coordination is, is good.
Yeah.
I just have one more thing that people need to know, that if, if they're not a gardener, they're still welcome to go down there. If they see somebody there, they can go, and it's unlocked. They're welcome to walk through there. It's very pleasant there at night in the summertime.
Yes, absolutely. And that was a big, I mean, Ryan wasn't a gardener when he started. I just started gardening a couple of years ago, and I've gotten very obsessed with it. But it is very much a come-as-you-are kind of organization. We don't, we're always willing to educate those who may not know as much, and we're, we have every tool there available for people to use, so they don't have to. I think with gardening, people don't know, but it's an expensive hobby. It can get expensive with soil, water. You have to buy the tools, the seeds, and all these things, and we provide all of that for them. We have soil that people can use in their beds. We have compost bins. We have all of these things, so people don't feel so overwhelmed with getting started. It's, hey, you rented a bed. We prepared, we weeded the bed for you. Go ahead and plant what you want and let us know how it goes and if you need anything.
And we do have certain items that you can't plant, like mint is one of them. But when you sign a contract, yeah, we have a mint infestation, or we almost think we got it covered up. But, but so when you, when they do sign a contract, there are certain things that you can't grow inside the garden.
Trees.
Need one of them. Yeah, so.
But yeah, that's, that's us. Any other questions?
Yeah, that's community garden, has it right now.
Any comments? I appreciate you coming in, and I also appreciate that you are younger than the average gardener that I've seen down there.
Just by a hair.
Yes, not by much, yeah.
Mostly your parents' age or more, so that's nice. And if I buy a bed, will you put the flowers in it and then?
Are you a doctor? Yes.
Yeah, I'm asking you. Yeah, Ron, here negotiations going on.
We'll have your wife, have your wife pick them and we'll put them in. How was that?
No, that's the whole thing. It's a surprise.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll do it.
She's not going to watch this, so it'll be a surprise.
You got it, Ron. We'll make that happen.
Okay, very good. I'll see you guys down there then. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
As a follow-up, Chairman Orrin, for the three longer-standing commissioners, as you recall, typically, we'd be holding some form of Arbor Day, Earth Day events. Combination being a little short-staffed, and normally we'd be trying to plan this a month or two ago, which would have put us at the tail end of the latest COVID wave and all that, so. With the uncertainty of all that, you know, we're feeling more certain today to get school kids out and whoever to help with the event instead, since we have some new board members with the gardens. And I saw a present, similar presentation at, since, back in February, I believe, I thought bringing them out and introducing everybody to the new board members and the events, particularly if you go on their social media sites and see the regular coffee and cleanup days once a month. You know, they're having slightly more activities and things going on there, but we weren't quite ready to coordinate a Arbor Day or Earth Day type event like we normally did. Hopefully, a year from now, we will. And, but as of right now, it's just the gardens as they've always been there. But with some more events there with the spring festival they got coming up, so get on their Facebook and Instagram page to see what's going on there.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mark. Okay, that moves us to item four, if I'm not mistaken. I do appreciate you both coming in. That was enlightening.
Yeah, thank you very much.
It's nice, and it's nice to see the community involvement that you're expressing and nurturing, so thanks a lot. Okay, Planning Commission review, City of Taft growth and annexations. We have a printout here for us. And Mr. Staples, this is you to us.
Yes, Chairman Orrin, it's combination, review, presentation, information providing. I've been wanting to do a review on the city's growth and population and annexations. So I've combined them into one here as they're somewhat related to each other in that, you know, some people might feel that Taft is losing people, you know, with the ups and downs of the oil market and the related businesses that support the oil industry here in Taft. So I'm going to go over a presentation. Let me get out of this one that's on the screen here. Apologies for not being as ready with this one. All right. So first I'll begin with the state and city's population growth. Back in May of two thousand twenty-one, the State Department of Finance, which produces yearly demographic information based on what they're able to collect with births, deaths, tax filings, and things like that, they tend to provide a better year-to-year population estimate for statewide and for all the city communities in the state of California. They issued a press release last May that during the two thousand twenty year, the first of the pandemic years, this population in the state of California dropped for the first time in many, many decades by a hundred and eighty-two thousand people. The three main causes that they listed in the drop were attributed to the number of deaths exceeding births for non-COVID-related deaths and also COVID-related deaths. As you see on the screen here, twenty-four thousand for the non-COVID-related. There was more deaths than births. And then the excessive deaths with fifty-one thousand being COVID-related. Despite the drop, there were some cities that saw a significant increase in population. The top three were the Town of Paradise, City of Calamasa, and City of Lathrop. The top, based on percentage, not total number. And then the bottom three, if you will, were us, the City of Taft, City of Santa Cruz, and the City of Albany. However, City of Taft's population, which I'll go over some more detailed numbers, but it wasn't related to actually people leaving. It was the two prison facilities closing during the two thousand twenty year, and we'll see it again in two thousand twenty-one with our city facility officially closing in May of twenty-one. And that was the, why it's a drop of seventeen percent in population for us here in Taft, whereas Santa Cruz and Albany were probably more related to their actual population for whatever particular reason there. Here's a table which matches the table in the staff report providing. Here's a table uh which matches the table in the staff report provided to you, and you'll see if you mostly look at the top line for the um different years that I've listed, where um on the first page, it's two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty. On page two, you'll see two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fifteen. And then the third line is a ten-year increment, similar to the census, of nineteen seventy through two thousand and ten. And you'll see pretty much uh every year or every ten-year jump, there's been a slow and steady increase of population to the city of Taft. Um anywhere from, uh we did have one year in two thousand and fifteen where we lost one person in actual household population. But we've had as high as about a hundred um in a given year. But in overall, it's been generally a half a percent increase, which doesn't sound like a lot, but for a smaller town like us, it's a steady populant, population increase of about thirty to fifty people a year. Uh and a lot of times that is tied directly to um new permits issued for um housing units, homes, duplexes, apartments, and whatnot. And if you see on page two of the staff report, and in the um it looks like the second row of uh population on the PowerPoint presentation, two thousand and fourteen and fifteen were the lowest uh gains or even the loss with the one, as I mentioned before. And that was when we issued no or very few permits for a new home. Um and this, but as you see from two thousand and sixteen onward, it's been pretty steady, particularly with the new housing units over off of Hillard and um finishing up the tracks on Sunset and Pilgrim in the middle of town, and also the Amber Street Homes on the south side of town. So it's somewhat dispelling the myth that we're constantly losing population here. But typically, if it, if there was a gain or a loss, or a major gain or loss, that was related to the prison facilities opening in the nineties or closing recently. Then on to our county neighbors around us, because we're gonna lead into um, apologize, these bullet points were what I just discussed. Um our county neighbors in Ford City, South Taft, and Taft Heights. That's probably what most people think of as far as annexing or adding to the city of Taft. Um I've provided a table on the presentation and the staff report showing their growth in the ten-year increments uh similar to the census. Uh the table shows Ford City saw a significant gain, significant gain in population between the year two thousand and two thousand and ten. South Taft lost population between nineteen ninety and two thousand, but gained those losses back by two thousand and ten. And then Taft Heights has consistently seen a drop in population since nineteen eighty. Um overall, the Taft, what I refer to as the metropolitan area um between Taft, Ford City, South Taft, and Taft Heights currently has a total population of fourteen thousand seven hundred forty-four. There's the bullet points on that, so um and if, one thing I didn't note here is that if you look at the gains and losses between those three communities, uh county communities, um the total is roughly the same from when it was back in nineteen eighty and two thousand and twenty. The number of housing units haven't really gained a lot or even lost a lot through like demolition and whatnot. Um it's just as gained and lost uh between individually of the three communities, but overall, there's roughly about seven thousand seventy-five hundred uh people living in total between those three. And with that, does anybody have any questions on the population gains or losses between the city or the three county communities before I move on to annexations?
I do, I don't know how to word it.
Okay.
So the population, the total population on page three, the last box, Ford City, South Taft, Taft Heights, cumulative, cumulative population total between the city and those three areas is fourteen thousand. And what time, what, what is the date of that?
That's for the year of two thousand and twenty.
Okay, and do you have any idea what it was, say, in two thousand?
Uh I'd have to do the quick math on that. Um two thousand sixty-three, seventy? So we had, in the city, there was four hundred, uh the population was four hundred less in two thousand for the city. And for the three, three, four, five, sixty-six, seventy-one, uh seventy-one, thirteen, four, about thirteen thousand five hundred?
So is that an increase of maybe twelve hundred or so folks?
What's that?
There's a net increase of about twelve hundred people.
It seems like it.
Okay, and that does, that excludes the incarcerated population?
That is correct, yes.
Does it include the homeless population?
Uh I would assume so. Most populations, and they probably rely on the yearly counts that um in our case here in Kern County, um I believe Kern Cog and Concert with, I believe it's United Way, um try to do some yearly or every other year um homeless census in the county. It's a county-wide effort.
But we, we here in town have had that number given to us before.
It's varied between about fifteen to forty.
Right, we're, we're never approaching a hundred folks.
No.
Where, where do they put those people in, into the population of Taft, or
There.
Where they, where they are when they see them and count them?
Uh yes, they uh um they do um because there is somewhat tracking either through police departments or um nonprofit efforts. Um their locations where they tend to house themselves are somewhat tracked, not in any great detail, and that's where the volunteers.
Science, but it's pretty close.
So wherever they uh um typically stay and sleep for the night, um the United Way and the volunteers that help them out, and um through whatever government agencies that um help with that count, they typically know where those locations are and do their best to um find them and just, they do go through somewhat of a question-answer process and uh get them counted.
They're also, the counters are assigned in a specific area.
Oh.
So um when I did the count one year, we, we were given an area essentially between um Ash Street and um probably north and from.
That's all city.
Yeah, we were basically all city. So when we did our count, we turned ours, and others had Ford City, South Taft, uh somebody had Maricopa. So the area where you are, you count within your area, and that gives them at least a a ballpark. That doesn't guarantee that that person doesn't move to another area tomorrow, but that's what it was in that static moment.
Mark, one, one other question. It shows a um, a drop in population for Taft Heights. But the new, that seems kind of ironic because the housing development is off of Hillard, which would be considered, is that, is that considered Taft Heights?
No, that's city.
Oh, that's city.
That is.
Taft Heights is that county area.
It's all the Leonard Street and Phillip.
The middle of A Street south, until you get down, I forget.
One side of A is city and one side is county.
Yes, there's not many uh housing units on the city side of A Street.
There's a jagged line down the middle of A.
Up there, okay. Um I'm curious too, and I'm not expecting to have this, but it's my curiosity. What is our housing units availability been in two thousand versus two thousand and twenty?
That kind of detail and some of the details I'll get into on the annexation, I can provide at the annexation committee meeting. Which uh I'll be setting up probably sometime mid, late May, because I do want the latest update on the population count that unfortunately it'll probably have our um the, what they call group quarters, number near zero. Um I'm guessing the TIL students and maybe ARC folks and some others still get classed under group quarters. I think any kind of assisted living condition is also considered a group quarter. So um one thing that, if you noticed, uh as far back as nineteen ninety, there was a hundred and thirty-nine people in group quarters, and we didn't have any prison facilities at that time. So um they get counted in some other way. Um maybe some part of the hospital was still functioning, they had folks counted there. I'm not sure where those hundred and thirty-nine people are. My guess is it's partially maybe TIL, ARC, and some other assisted living.
We had the hospital thing at the time too. There was beds in the hospital for
So hopefully I'll, I'll receive a similar update first week of May. Um and that'll guide me to uh provide more specific information to the annexation committee, and I could definitely report back um in June or July for the planning commission.
Okay. Good. Look forward to seeing that.
Yeah.
How that all plays out and what we're talking about here.
All right, if there aren't any other questions, I can move on to the annexation portion. All right. Okay, so um on to annexations, because it would involve uh Ford City, South Taft, or Taft Heights. And uh just to give you some background on, on the annexations and the process. Um annexations and other boundary changes, creating new city and other processes um are regulated by the Cortezi-Knox-Hertzberg Local Government Reorganization Act of two thousand. Reason why it has all those names is that they actually were two to, two different sets of laws that were conflicting with each other for a decade or more through the eighties and nineties, when cities were forming and annexing and things like that, where they were almost canceling each other out, and um those particular, I forgot if they were assembly or senators with the state, they joined together with Hertzberg to create this singular um act that governs annexations and other processes. Those uh processes are administered by the Local Agency Formation Commission, and you may have heard of the term LAFCO, which is the acronym of that commission. And there's one LAFCO agency for all of the state, for each of the state's counties, and they handle the um activities within that coun- county. Um the purpose of LAFCO agencies is to discourage urban sprawl, preserve ag land and open space areas, and to encourage the orderly formation and development of local government agencies. And I've put here on the last bullet on the annexations, those agencies are beyond cities. It includes the water districts, recreation districts, fire protection districts, and other special districts that may be out there. Um I couldn't think of all the others that are formed in other um counties, but anything that has a district at the name of, end of the name, most likely LAFCO is reviewing and uh covering the uh boundary areas that they govern. So for annexations, a real simple bullet point steps on the application process. If a city was going to annex an area, they would adopt a resolution of application that is included um with the city's um application to the local LAFCO agency. Um the city and county would need to negotiate a property tax exchange. And I'll go over that in a minute, why that, or how that's done and why it's needed. Um the LAFCO executive officer reviews the application resolution and uh and resolutions affecting the property tax exchange, and issues a notice of filing. Within ninety days of that notice of filing, the commission will conduct the first public hearing, which is referred to as the notice of application hearing. The commission adopts a resolution making determination to approve or deny the proposal. Typically, it wouldn't move forward unless it was something that could be approved. Um one thing I didn't put in here, I'm just realizing, is the makeup of the LAFCO commission. It's made up of, I believe, two board supervisors, maybe three. Um City of Bakersfield always has a seat on the commission board, and then three out of the remaining ten cities in the county um have seats on the board, and it rotates between the other ten cities. And uh then I believe two special districts have seats on the, on the board, so uh Les Clark with the REC or other districts that are um, cover other cities in the county will have two seats. And all of those do have um alternates as well, just like committees you sit on. Um after the approval of an annexation by the commission, the um executive director will set for the second public hearing, and the quotations are heavy here in the protest hearing. Um where the protest hearing receives written and oral testimony, um and depending on the number of protests received, um that will determine whether the annexation is approved, subject to a local election to approve it or it terminates the proposal overall. Um if the uh number of protests is low, then the commission will order the annexation approved, and the executive officer issues a certificate of completion that is recorded. And as you caught through some of those points, the three key items, or actually, there's two in those points where one is the property tax exchange I mentioned. The protest hearing that is provided to the annex, annexation areas, registered voters and/or property owners, and then what's not listed is some of the recent state legislation that was passed to address the passing over of unincorporated communities by cities. So first, I'm gonna cover the uh property tax exchange negotiation with the county. Um the city needs to work with a county, um this applies to all cities statewide, and particularly here in Kern County, to have a uh MOU with the county um regarding that property tax transfer. And this involves uh reorganizing the um distribution of that first line in your property tax bills, which is the one percent general tax. Within that, um depending on what part of the county you're in, it could be split five ways, eight ways, whatever it may be. And here, it's county, county fire, city, Taft City Schools, Taft Union. Uh I believe uh the Community College gets a piece, the REC District. And I can't remember beyond those seven, but I think it's eight or nine um total agencies that split that one percent that's collected on that first line item. And then those of you that own property, you see the other line items there, those are the additional assessments that were placed there through a vote, or election of some.
Cemetery, water, and mosquito districts.
Yes, um some sort of election or additional assessment, like your trash bills are there. Um and then there's a statewide uh um line item there, but that one percent, the first one on your tax bills is what gets uh negotiated so that the city could get their typical chunk like they do um in the city areas, but if we annex, let's say Ford City, we need to negotiate how the city gets a portion of the current one percent in those districts. And then um uh and then based on that, it helps determine the feasibility of whether or not an annexation of an area is financially feasible uh for the city to take on the county, employ more staff, and provide the services that the city typically provides citywide. So here's more tables on that. Now, don't take this as absolute gold, even though there's gold colors. Um I've provided um the property valuations for the Taft, Ford City, South Taft, and Taft Heights areas for both secured and unsecured, and then did the math for the one percent out of those valuations that they base the property tax collection on. And then the far right column, I put a title on top of fifteen percent. That's roughly an average, because there are multiple tax rate areas within the city and within each of those three neighborhoods. And our, what we collect in property tax and also the county, uh or let's just say us, in our, um I think it's about a dozen or more different tax rate areas. I think it's as low as twelve percent of that one percent and as high as eighteen percent. So fifteen is a general uh number there, so that's why if you did the fifteen percent math on it, if that number doesn't come out as exactly fifteen percent, that's why. I applied as many known percentages as I could to get those totals, but as you'll see in two thousand and sixteen, the presumed um tax, uh property tax that we collected in two thousand and sixteen was about five hundred and ten thousand. And then the summation of the three uh county neighborhoods was about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And then on the second table, which is at the bottom of the slide, but on page four of the staff report, the amount of presumed tax that would be collected in Taft rose to about almost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the three county neighborhoods also increased to just short of three hundred thousand dollars. And part of that difference, I believe I have it on here, um I already mentioned that the value is very area to area, but uh part of the reason why we have uh more property tax revenues, we have far more commercial and industrial properties that can um be higher valued, and in turn, the one percent collects more from those properties. But as I mentioned before, if that three hundred thousand is what can be expected from the three neighborhoods, that is a lot of money, but it isn't as much when, okay, where do you direct those monies into more employment in the city? Whether it be a police officer, public works crew, whatever it may be, or does it go towards more services or um capital improvements? And with that, because some of the neighborhoods are um lacking curb, gutter, sidewalk, uh South Taft doesn't have a full sewer system, things like that, we would have to prepare a capital improvement plan on how we would plan over time to um increase or improve those services to the three neighbors. That would be included with the application. So I gave you the very brief Cliff Notes version of what the application process is, but these are numbers we would have to present to the um LAFCO commission along with the capital improvement plan, and how all this would work and be able to provide services to any of the three neighborhoods or all three if we went for all three at the same time. So that's the property tax um exchange part of this. Now, the second part of the process is, or the item of concern is Now, the second part of the process is, or the item of concern is the protest hearing. And we're in a hearing, or we're not conducting a hearing, but this is a public meeting here at the planning commission. But the protest hearing, when it involves LAFCO, is that they actually send a notice. To the landowners or the registered voters of the area you're looking to annex. And it's a, it's, this is a very Cliff Notes version as well, where. It notifies them that the decision was made at that first hearing and do you protest that decision? It's, I'm simplifying, but it's basically checking a box yes and sending the form back to the LAFCO office. So um when that's done, and I believe I have it on this slide here. If less than twenty five percent of that group, so let's just say it's a hundred registered voters, if less than twenty five respond. Then the annexation proposal is approved. If it's between twenty five and fifty, I don't know if it's forty nine or fifty, don't quote me on this. That's when it goes to a local election, so the next election available to um. Have a vote just for that neighborhood, so those that are registered voters in South Taft. Would be able to go to an election to approve the annexation. Or if more than fifty percent of people respond to that um protest hearing notice. Then it outright terminates the annexation process. So what that does is that us, the city, if we pursued a annexation of a particular neighborhood. We would need to do all the outreach and other things necessary to. Contact all those registered voters. Or landowners, because if it's an area that we're looking at that's has less than twelve registers, registered voters. So it's mostly commercial properties or vacant land, whatever it may be, or just dealing with landowners, but. Assuring that we know we have support from that neighborhood, that they want to be a part of the city is key in this whole process, so. You wo- you wouldn't even want to be going to that first hearing or even submitting to LAFCO if you don't have that support to begin with, so. There's a lot of this busy work of determining what kind of revenues to expect. Um I only show the property tax value, there is some commercial land in the county areas or sales tax that we would be collecting. Um that somebody would have to provide some estimations on. And then the, just the local support for that uh would be necessary, so it just, we're not spinning our wheels or wasting time on that.
Okay, I, I do have a question.
Yes.
Okay, are you ready?
Yeah.
All right, the last item there, it says that if we can document there's a hundred percent land owner.
Yes.
Consent. I'm curious, well, how would you demonstrate that?
That would be the areas looking to annex if there isn't more than twelve uh registered voters.
Okay.
You go to just landowners, you only need their consent, so. Let's say if we wanted to extend on the other side of the um aqueduct towards the farmland. And even though it's hundreds or thousands of acres, there may only be three. Farmer owners of that area, we'd be dealing with the three farmers out in that area. And if we could get a letter from each of those three farmers that says, yes, um we've discussed it with them and we want to be part of it. And we go through the whole um application process and submitting the information requested by the LAFCO office. The um process at that first hearing, uh it would say um that. The protest hearing would be waived because um the city of Taft had received hundred percent landowner consent.
Okay.
It, it, it doesn't look like it's available, even if you have maybe a low um registered voter account, let's say you had twenty. You know, that wouldn't be too difficult to maybe get all twenty to say yes. Um it doesn't look like that option is there, but if you got the yes, then. They would go through the protest hearing vote and most likely you'd get zero responses on that. And then that second hearing would confirm that, and then there is a hearing, but it's more to confirm. How many responses were received on that noticing.
Okay.
So um so that's one of the other major hurdles. And then third, I have is the second to last paragraph on the staff report is Senate Bill two forty four. Which was approved in twenty eleven. And this is um a bill that was passed, as I mentioned, where. Uh state legislation to encourage cities to um investigate further whether or not. Certain county communities would be a part of, or at least to confirm whether or not they want to stay as a county neighborhood. Um so cities and could not cherry pick certain uh desirable pieces of land and start skirting around a neighborhood. Whether it was intentional because they just didn't want to be a part of it, or whether or not they already knew. Informally that a neighborhood didn't want to be a part of the city. Um there's processes a city would have to go through to um um show to LAFCO that they're not skirting around. A particular uh disadvantaged, unincorporated community, the acronym DUC or DUC. Um and the way those um areas are determined is, uh we've talked about census tract areas before. It covers a large part of the city and the county neighborhoods. Where they look at the block group level, which is the next scale down. And um if a particular block group neighborhood um has a. Median household income of less than eighty percent of the state median income. And I believe there might be some other factors, not just income, then it's considered a disadvantaged, unincorporated community. So the county has, I mean, the state has mapped out, and if you could see this map here, the. Uh kind of rose colored areas um that are mapped out there, there are three block groups. Two that comprise South Taft and one that's comprising all of uh Taft Heights, which is. Um the far west part of that rose colored area. And um so if we wanted land around that, which we're pretty much around three sides of that. As it is with um Oak Street to the south. Um the city, the far east boundary of the rose color area is the city boundary as it goes south and kind of zigzags. Back and forth across um Highway thirty three.
Okay.
And most of the land south is all um Chevron or Berry oil land. And then uh to the west is actually a um the city boundary, which is, if you want to call it the. Cities portion of Taft Heights, that's actually in our city boundary. So we're around all three sides, so. It, and this looks like it has changed since seven, eight years ago, um when we last looked when even Ford City was included in the. Um disadvantaged, unincorporated community list and area. Um so there may be some opportunity where the Franklin Field area and the rec sports fields with the Little League fields and West Side Waste. If we wanted to incorporate just some of that area or annex some of that area before going into the Ford City area. Looks like, based on this recent map, I printed this out on March thirty first. That um we might be able to do that and not fall under that Senate Bill two forty four. So between now and the annexation committee meeting, I'll reach out to our LAFCO office. And bring up some past questions that staff before me, and I think. Commissions before the five of you were discussing back in the two thousands of kind of. Working our way towards the boundaries of the three neighborhoods and then. When there was more of a feel that any of those three wanted to be part of the city and whether the city wanted to include them. Uh we can move forward on that, but I think that might have been um shut down a bit because it was kind of. Picking and choosing areas without considering the neighborhoods. There was some wanting of that area upon Ash and Cedar in the northeast part of the city and county area. And then uh the museum, West Side Believers, some of the non-residential stuff right to the south. At the thirty three and one nineteen split. Um I have a little discussion of past attempts, and I think that was the last one, was those two areas. Um that didn't proceed very far, I don't think they got to the application level. Um but with this map, that western rose color area does include the. Non-residential portions there with the museum, West Side Believers. And there's a trucking company down there and all that, so. Uh I'm gonna have discussions with them about if the city tried to proceed with that again and if we had. Um a favorable response, how would the Senate Bill two forty four come into play? So I'll present that to the um um annexation committee and um. Let me get to this last slide and we'll dive into more questions, so. Uh as I mentioned in the last paragraph and on this last slide here, we've had a total of forty three proposed annexations. Most were approved and accepted. Annexation number forty two was the most recently approved in, I believe, two thousand and seven. Um it included a tract map and it's the vacant land immediately east of the rec district softball fields. Uh between Cedar and Ash, between the fields and the airport road um intersection.
Mm-hmm.
And there was a tract approved, but it, I believe it ran into the unfortunate buzz of the recession of the late two thousands. And it's already exhausted the automatic state extensions and there's been no filed extension since, so. Uh we would entertain a similar map if proposed, but they would have to go through the process again. But it is within the city limits right now. Um and that was the last one approved, there was a forty three and that was, what I was mentioning a minute ago was. Um including the rest of the rec ball field, West Side Waste, Franklin Field property between one nineteen and um. Or east of one nineteen between Ash and Cedar. And then also the non-residential portions at the thirty three, one nineteen split by the museum. Was a, I don't think they ever applied. They were doing all the public outreach and other feelers for things, and I think that's when the law came down. About um avoiding the um the uh county communities that are considered the disadvantaged ones, so. So that never moved forward and never got approved, so. Um and as I mentioned, uh planning to have a annexation committee meeting scheduled sometime late May. Once I get the latest update on population numbers, just confirming with both facilities closed, the. The prison population numbers won't be as much of our population, total population numbers. And then see um whether we gained or lost in the last year. Uh we did issue a number of new housing permits, both for Amber Street and um Sandy Creek Estates off of Hillard, so. Hopefully we'll see a nice little thirty, fifty person bump up again, as we've seen over um more than ten years, so.
Okay.
I'll end my presentation there and then I'll take any questions from the five of you on any portion of this. Any follow-ups on uh the population growth or annexations?
Did that tract map, did that only include land in between Cedar and Ash?
Yes, there is a sliver of land, I don't have a map for you, and I don't think the. Disadvantaged community map shows it all that clearly.
I thought there was something east.
There's a sliver um on the north side of Cedar, east of the um cemetery property.
Oh, there was.
Was included as well.
Okay.
Um but it's uh had no um um subdivision proposed for that. And there's actually a portion of the land that's in an annexation. Um the most immediate piece of land that um shares a boundary with the airport road. Um that wasn't laid out, it was about eighty, ninety percent of the total land had a tentative map laid out for it. And the portion furthest east along Airport Road actually had an R two zoning. The part that was laid out was an R one, typical single family tract. Um and the R two, I think, was gonna be proposed later for like a smaller lot. Two units per lot, kind of uh slightly higher density type project, but it just never really got going after approval. Because of the recession, most likely.
But our new R two, R one ADU, all that business comes into play, so I don't know that even. They would want to pursue an R two map, just leave it all R one, because there's gonna be R two anyhow.
Technically, yes, um but um you need the builders to produce all that, and I think we'll still have as many typical seed and family builders.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I'd prefer an R two a lot and being included in that, that just paves the way and lets um. Not someone respond and change their, their view of how an ADU is to be treated.
Right, so, okay.
So a quick question.
Yes.
Say for example, you wanted to annex Ford City. We would have to run plumbing, like sewer and sidewalks down there.
Ford City has sewer, so we're okay there, but it would be under our um maintenance requirement. At the moment, right now, it's a joint city-county thing that I would leave to our city manager, who's also the public works director, director to. Explain that, but we'd have to have a full public services document that's included in the application to LAFCO. That shows however, our responsibility now covers that portion of the county sewer. Because it does have its own trunk line that feeds to the sewer treatment plant um to the east along Cedar. Um so we're there, but yes, you're right on the um street improvement side of things that would um fall on us and. Be a new area that we would have to consider when we get our yearly funds from Caltrans and. New grant applications, we'd be looking as, to that area as an area to start filling in the segments that don't have a full. Curb gutter and sidewalk in addition to the asphalt, and then if there's a need for a complete asphalt, um you know. Resurfacing as well would be part of the whole capital improvement plan I was mentioning. Where that plan basically takes each of the segments of roads and does a kind of a ranking or a grading, excuse me. Of what condition it's in, some may be fine, but they just don't have the curb gutter and sidewalk, some could be. Um in a, a worse condition where, where it needs a complete resurfacing, and that's what the plan would outline and. Um I'm not sure of the overall time period where it would be expected for us to help with that, but. And that, and that's part of the juggling act is, is there enough on the front end where the presumed tax revenues can help? Um do enough segments over enough time to improve it? Or is it not there and that's why we would not want to approach it? Um annexing a particular area if there's too much improvement to make.
I could see the initial investment being millions.
Yes.
Oh, hundreds of millions.
Yeah.
When, when you look at.
Flood control is gonna kill you down there.
There's drainage as well, and it costs even more than.
Stormwater issues, um when you look at um, when you look at the sewer and, uh the sewer. The city and the county are fifty one, forty nine partners, basically. The city runs it, they're the fifty one, forty nine is um Ford City and Taft Heights. Um so in terms of sewer, that's actually why South Taft could be the most expensive. Annexation, because even though they have put in trunk lines, um thank, thank.
It was everything.
Thank Dave Couch, you get that far, you still have to do a whole bunch of connections there, it wasn't everything, you're right. Um the one thing I was wondering is, there, there seems to have been, and I haven't looked at their. Their very old general plan stuff for this, but. Um I recall an entire block where they put in new housing down there. And they did put in sidewalks and curbs. And I'm wondering if the way they require sidewalks and curbs would impact the way we would be required to um. Match, in other words, they're not putting them in now. Why if we annexed them, would we suddenly be required to do them in a manner different from the way they were doing it? Which appears to be on an as um as applied basis, in other words, somebody puts in a new. House, or they do enough of a uh a remodel or a tear down remodel. Where you would then have the, the hooks, if you will, in the um, the process to actually require. Those, which is what appears that the county has been doing. Wouldn't we be in that same boat?
Well, that, that would be part of the overall improvement plan, and that's one thing about the LAFCO process. Uh as much as if someone saw my bullet points and how I best uh summarize the process. Um it is definitely a little more fluid, I guess you could say, compared to. Um somebody trying to build something in a city or county where there would be a lot of back and forth and consultation, if you will, between. The city and LAFCO and what the executive officer that runs that office and what kind of expectations they. Are seeing or what the commission, the board would see in any of these proposals and. There may be flexibility in the perceived timeline of how long it would take to install. Missing improvements or areas that need improvement. And we would probably do some form of uh zoning ordinance amendment in addition to the resolution. That the council would approve and that we might adjust or um call out that area. Where if there's not a um street frontage on the vacant pieces of land and somebody comes in to put in one house or a duplex. Their fifty foot wide lot would have to put in the curb gutter and sidewalk as well, or not, or whatever the procedure might be. That, that's all part of the process of the improvements that are needed, whether they get planned out. Adjust our zoning ordinance um with relation to as a new home comes in or duplex or overall development project. Those are all the things we have to map out in a way as part of our submittal, and how we plan to. Install and provide those services and maintain it.
Are we qualified to do mellow roos on an individual lot like that? Uh or would it be?
So along those lines, um in the past and some other jurisdictions I've worked in where we've barely started annexation processes. That is the other unspoken hurdle, if you will, of the process where. of the process where um whether it's the consultants they bring on board to analyze the feasibility of it. Um a lot of times there is a mellow ruse-like um assessment, additional assessment placed on annexed county areas. And that's to develop the fund that would go direct to um installing sewer, street, um curb gutter and sidewalk.
Yeah, that.
Now, I don't know if uh how well those have gone. A lot of those tend to be rejected because it's, you know, it's more taxes for those folks. So it doesn't necessarily look like a red carpet to them as far as uh coming into the city and if they're paying however many thousands per year in addition on property taxes. So um that's, that's been proposed in many other instances. Um it's certainly easier if it's vacant land and the tract is planned out and it's on taxes day one. But to add it on whatever the existing typical assessment a Ford City, South Taft or Taft Heights resident sees, you know, they're just seeing the two percent increase every year. Uh to see something jump even higher obviously would probably not sit very well. So that's part of the, how do we plan it out? How do we incorporate it? Um and then turn the tax dollars around to um provide those services to the area. And that, that's, that's more the in-depth that we would probably be discussing at a committee level. And uh we could definitely report back uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Once we get a feel of what the uh Lafco office is.
If you could like bundle together all of the former Navy properties that people have purchased down there, you could probably do mellow ruse on those relatively easy because the landowners would be the ones voting on it. Um and then you would have the problem that every Southern California development project down there had, which was the big sign on somebody else's property, no mellow ruse.
Yeah.
Um that was because somebody was riding on the coattails somewhere else on the property. Um it'd be really hard to do mellow ruse for an individual property.
You'd have to, that would have to be part of the sales plan.
Yeah.
You'd have to pitch that as, it's generally a twenty-year expiration.
There'd be a sunset for sure. That's the best selling point, yeah.
If you're committed to twenty years of significantly more tax.
Correct.
And as a definite, you definitely need to put in the quality um uh amenities that would be an attraction. Somebody thinking that they're just buying gutter sidewalk is not happy with the idea that they're buying theirs and the neighbor across the street hasn't.
Agreed.
Okay. So um this will lead into the annexation, annexation committee meeting. So those that sit on, I believe it's Chairman Orin, I believe Commissioner Dowden. Sure, I believe. And I believe Commissioner Johnson is our alternates for the two committees, if I'm remembering right. We'll definitely reach out to you, let you know well in advance when that meeting will be scheduled.
Sometime in May, you believe?
It's gonna be probably mid, late May. And I'll probably throw out a couple dates out to the two of you, because that is running up against Memorial Day weekend. You know, we all have varying schedules, maybe pushes into June. But I want to get the latest population data from the state, which should be fir- first week of May. And then a couple of weeks after that, we'll schedule it and not conflict with other meetings.
It's Ron Orin and John Dowden, and there is no alternate from Planning Commission.
All right.
Just an alternate from City Council.
There we go.
Who's the City Council?
Ra, uh, the City Council's Orchard, Dave Nor and Josh Bryant is the alternate. Uh Ron Orin, Don, John Dowden are the Planning Commissioners. And Holly Arnold is listed here as Cal Resources Corp rep. I don't know if that's still accurate.
No, we uh reached out to their office uh back then. We'll have to do it again. But we'll probably keep it to the four we have and then rebuild the rest of the um committee, working with the oil companies because they own the mineral rights all of them within us. So we'll uh definitely do that if we have a follow-up meeting beyond that. Uh but for now, we'll stick it to, to the four of you and uh take direction from there, because it's been a number of years.
Okay, that concludes four. We are on to item five, Planning Director's Report.
I'll keep this fairly quick. In that, uh, last Thursday, we held the third workshop for the downtown Taft specific plan.
Yep.
Um for those that missed out, we have an excellent video that captured it all. It's already, the link to it, uh well, one, it's on our City Clerk YouTube page, where all the City Council and Planning Commission meetings are. There is a uh link to the project website, both on the city's Facebook page and the project uh section of the city website, where that separate project website I've shown you with the map that had all the comments and all that kind of stuff. Um the um YouTube video is embedded in that as well. If you go to the project website where that video is embedded, the uh materials that were used in the meeting are there as well for reference. But please take the survey that's on that project website. It's in the comment section right now of the Facebook page post. Um but it's also on that project site where the worksheet that we went through that went over different urban design amenities. There were some multiple choice areas of what do you like for park plazas or architecture and this and that. It's um on that survey as um you could choose multiple things that you like. And then there are answer how you like, open field questions. So you could provide your feedback both as selections and an open response to the project team for what you do and do not like about particular signage, open space areas, playgrounds, architecture, density, height, um things like that. So please, I encourage all five of you, or welcome to take that survey to provide more input. Uh tell other people to click on the links. I'll be making sure it shows up regularly on the uh city Facebook page. Um so people know it's there, but encourage as many people as you can to take it. Um they don't have to provide their contact info for that, like the rest of the project website does. But utilize that link to uh take that survey.
Sure, thank you.
And that's all I have. And it'll be, this, there might be a little lull till the next uh um time I'll be able to share information on the project, because we're starting to get into the environmental phase. And it'll take a probably a good month or so before I get some materials back from them, because they're doing traffic modeling and other stuff, just to make sure everything pencils out. But also the bulk of the document preparation, both the specific plan and the environmental documents. So that's our main task for the next four to six weeks. So you may not hear anything until June, uh when we're in the middle of the environmental review period. Um with some of the numbers that were shown there for housing units and jobs, which would generate the traffic um assumptions and all that kind of stuff. So hopefully this whole project could get approved and cleared. And projects that go in on all the vacant areas of downtown will be as smooth sailing as could be, at least environmentally.
Great.
And that's all I have for my Planning Director's Report.
All right, thank you. Item six, Mr. Uperson.
Thank you, no statement, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Uperson. That moves us on to seven, which is Commissioner comments. Why shall we start with Mr. Lykem?
Uh I have none at this time.
Okay, Mr. Dowden?
Uh one little thing, um up off A Street and Hilliard at a Parkview School. They had uh redone the fence and they had put the slots in there. And I know why they did it, but they, it's really hard to see around that corner now. And we're seeing cars, because if you stop at stop sign and then you pull out there, like it's, it's kind of like a wreck waiting to happen right there. Because you can't see around that corner very well. I don't know if they can like cut that fence shorter.
Compounded with the two or three cars that parked nearest the corner too, on the north side of A Street. I've, I've experienced the same thing out there.
Yeah, this is up maybe.
You have to kind of inch out and it is a little bit dangerous.
You do gotta inch out, an inch out, an inch out, and then maybe you can go.
And then close your eyes and gas it.
So we've experienced close encounters ourselves and then eventually someone's gonna crash there, so.
Yep. Um I wish I could remember when their uh board meetings are for the Taft City Schools, but that's one way to relay to them. I believe they do have a general email of some sort um on the city, on the Taft City School website, but I could do what I can to relay. We'll figure out on the city side. Okay?
Yeah.
That'd be the place to go.
Yeah, um.
And then they can interface with the city if it's.
The fencing is theirs, the street, they could coordinate with us if they need to uh maybe reduce the parking, because you mentioned um stacked vehicles also are blocking the view. So we'll see uh what we could do on our end. But um I think starting with the school, um however their communication lines are for um the city school district, it's probably the fir- uh first, most immediate way to go.
Thank you, Jim. All right, Commissioner Johnson?
No, nothing for me.
Jerry?
Nope.
Okay. Nor do I. Just be mindful of what's going on at the national level. We're, we're not in a crisis, but we have some serious concerns to um keep up the speed on. We're losing the grip on what we used to be. That's it for me. So now we're looking to appoint Jerry.
Glad I'm being there.
See him over there.
Yep.
I'm appointable.
Okay, he's appointed and uh then we need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. That carries on to five zero. Thank you.